We're good to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Board of Health Regular Meeting, Old Town Hall, 111 Somerset Avenue. As a reminder, this is a remote participation Zoom meeting. Also, a public meeting being recorded by -- I thought they were coming. For cable broadcasts and Internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. It is Zoom meeting number 810-880-38436. Zoom meeting passcode is 276794. May I repeat that? Zoom meeting passcode, 276794. Zoom dialing number, 19292056099. Meeting is now called to order. And if you -- everyone in mind, please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to number four. Our first honor business is to introduce Mrs. Barbara Katavia as our new health agent. She replaces the vacancy of Matt Tanis. Barbara already has experience in the field with Title V work and food safety. I feel strongly she's going to be a great asset to the board, and I'm looking forward to serving with her.
Thank you.
Yeah, same here.
Thank you. I'm so excited about it. I really am.
Anything you want to say to the world?
Not now, right? No, not yet. For the future.
We also have another piece of good news. We were underwater for some time with the contact tracing due to COVID. It was pretty much impossible keeping up when we were getting over 10 cases a day. We had 113 cases last week. We had 92 cases the week before. And if you're familiar with contact tracing, notification of family members and so forth who had contact with a COVID patient who had the symptoms, it does take some time. Right now, how many are we tracking, Todd? 200 in town? Not that many anymore?
No, somewhere around there.
Yeah, so it's a little bit of work. So, bottom line is, we were, with the assistance of the Board of Selectmen, approving a money transfer. We were able to hire us a part-time, temporary contact tracer. We'll be able to do some contact tracing. She has experience as a contact tracer when they were doing it at the CTC Contact Tracing Center and Community Tracing Center of Boston. So, she's very familiar with the process and very familiar with the data input system that we use. So, she will also be a great asset. And if I didn't mention her name, it's Diana Shannon. She's also a Dighton resident, as is Barbara. So, she's not here this evening. I probably should have asked her to come, but...
She's busy making phone calls.
She's busy.
She has a lot of them to do.
4C Interview Transfer Station Attendant, John Lawrence. You must be John.
That's correct.
John, you want to tell us about yourself a little bit?
About -- Take off your mask so it gets picked up better by the microphone. Okay, thank you. I moved here about five years ago from Warwick, Rhode Island. Currently, I live in Amargone in the Mahwahs of North Fall River. Actually, I worked with Co-op, an organization working with adults with brain injuries and other disabilities. The reason why I applied for the transfer station is become more involved with the town. Currently, I am a member of the Historical Commission as well as the Knights of Columbus. So, yeah, I just, I always go to the dump, usually on Tuesdays, because that's my days off. But I was telling Todd, my schedule may change, so now it's going to be Saturdays off instead of Tuesdays. So, I'm not sure how that would impact, but I figured I'd let you guys know now.
Saturday would be the biggest -- Saturday is seven hours. We're open seven hours, open from 9:00 to 3:00 on that day, 8:00 to 3:00. And as far as Tuesdays go, if you were available that day, and we had a vacancy for that day, that would be your day.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, it is. And I know the situation already.
Yeah, so like I said before with the schedule change, it would be more towards now like Saturday.
Yeah, the hours are on Saturday.
Okay, so...
And so, it's really, the issue is kind of moot now at this point, because you're not going to be available Tuesdays anyway, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, now it'll be Saturday, which I think that's what we originally discussed, would be better suited rather than Tuesday.
Yeah. So, if you were available both days, and we had the vacancy...
So, if the attendant's not available on a Tuesday, the DPW workers can cover the shift.
It's only a couple of hours, right?
Yeah, it's only two hours. If it's Saturdays, then it would be overtime, which is why the Saturday was more of a need.
And so, I'll learn more next week about that permanent schedule change.
Okay. We'd like to get your -- well, first, I got to tell you, you know these hours are going to be few and far between.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because, although I think our current attendant wouldn't mind taking a Saturday off every now and then.
But he's never had a backup, so...
No, he's never had any backup, and he's pretty dedicated and loyal to the town.
Yeah, he loves it.
So, you know Mr. Reins, right? Obviously, on Tuesdays.
Every two conversations here and there.
What we'll do, if everybody -- well, there's only two of us, as I mentioned. I want to back up a minute. I know we were talking, you know, that I asked a new member to sit here with us, even though she has not been appointed yet. She was supposed to be appointed last night, and they had some technical difficulty and canceled their meeting. She will sit here and discuss it with us since it's an open meeting, but cannot vote. That's the only situation that we have to deal with. So, that's why she's up here with us, to get used to her seat and to move from there.
I'd like to see if you can take that seat.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Be a good boy.
July 1st. You've got to be somewhat familiar with the process and...
Yeah, the only thing I'm not familiar with is like, kind of like the paperwork. I know like he writes off like X amount of dollars, but the prices, I know they fluctuate yearly, so I'm not sure like if it's changed or...
I could give you the prices, just so you can kind of get familiar, and your free time, just look at it.
Okay.
And then, obviously, we have you trained properly.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll give you some training, paid training, because it's only right you do that. I'm sure that, I think, there's wiggle room in our budget to get you the paid training, because he's had a couple of days off. I know Christmas being one. I think you should be able to get four hours of training, and you'll be, you'll be good to go, you know?
We only accept checks, so there's really no transit, like, it's easier for you and stuff like that.
Saturday would be the good day to train, because that's the busiest day.
Yeah.
So, it's a matter of doing the paperwork, and it would have been 1, 2, 3, whatever.
Straightforward.
Yeah, it is. So, it's just a price list, and it will, a lot of it is determined on your judgment. Not a lot, some of it.
Right.
It comes under a pickup load.
Oh, yeah, you're not going to be like, oh, yeah, this is a half a truck and then a full truck.
A half load, full load.
And when I fold in on a Saturday, it's either one or the other. Tim just says, you know what? That's full load. All right, it's full load. If it's a half load, it's a half load. So, you say the same thing. You determine, obviously, look in there. Some people might, I don't know, try to mix some stuff in there. You want to just kind of look at, stuff like that, and then kind of figure out what's what.
Use your best judgment.
Pretty simple, yeah.
And we'll give you a list of fees also for other things, like any electronics, TVs, mattresses have our separate checklist, box springs, sofas, but we'll give you a whole checklist. You won't have an issue.
Okay. Now, does the Department of Health go there like every now and then? Because sometimes I see them like, I'm not sure if they like moderate or something.
We have somebody monitor for, what's the name of our company that monitors the wells?
We have two different ones. One does for gas and one does for water.
Yeah. What's the name of it? I forget the name of it.
Green Steel Environmental.
And Weston and Sampson.
Okay, so they'll come by and they'll do their testing, because it is a closed landfill. Obviously, they still have some testing to do. We're required to do that. I think the only time DEP would go there, if there was a complaint, really, they don't show up there.
No, the DEP doesn't come down. We send them reports twice a year or whatever, and as long as everything reports okay, we just go.
Oh, just keep monitoring the operation? Okay.
So, I think the...
We have to put that up to bid soon.
Is it the salary, is it 16 something or 18? I don't recall.
So, like, if I am hired, what would be the, like, how far in advance will I know, like, if I'm working the next day? Would it be like 24 hours or like...
Well, I would hope we could get 20. I don't think you get sick. But a day off every once in a while, you probably like, you know?
Yeah, but in theory, if you is sick, you may...
It is a possibility. We could only notify you late that evening or early the next morning.
Okay. But, yeah, but when he had like a surgery, then you know that well in advance.
Oh, right, right, right. Normally, we'll try to get you at least, he'll know, hey, I want to take next Saturday off.
Yeah, yeah, we can communicate.
So, we'll let you know. We're going to get you trained for us and appointed.
Okay.
We're going to vote right now to...
Is it, anything you want to...
Is it to recommend? Voting to recommend, yes.
Just to answer the question, 1756.
I know what he makes now?
It's a July 1st.
Are you good with that? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I don't know what it is now, but July 1st will be 1756.
Yeah, I don't think...
I can look up.
I think everybody that goes there now pretty much has the system down and knows what protocol is. You may get somebody argue with you once in a while, but just keep smiling.
Yeah, 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 part of the job.
So, it's, you know, but there comes a point where I say, well, I'm not going to let you dump here if you, you know what I'm saying? If say, well, I don't agree with what you're telling me. This is not metal, or this is not something. I would give you an example, like recyclables. Remember, know those pools, baby pools, they're like fiberglass, plastic?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, unless you can fit it in a bag, it's not really a recyclable item, because you can get away with that for free, I think, right?
Yes.
Recyclables is free.
So... Cardboard and recyclables.
Yeah. It would have to fit in. The answer to that one is if they're bringing you something they think is recyclable, which is free, and they go to, if it's not going to fit in a 33-gallon trash bag, it's not a recyclable item.
Okay.
It's a bulky item. So, you may get that, you know? Use a player by ear and be nice.
And if something really happens, just document and call one of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Call the office. Just don't get into confrontation, so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think any of these can happen.
The same group of people go the same all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, usually, they'll either pay, file a complaint for it, they'll not pay and leave, and then they'll call.
Yeah. So, I expect you'll do okay.
Okay.
We have, it's not usually too many. It's usually the same issues. He charged him $30 and charged her $20, and yeah, so it's...
And I live in town, and Barbara lives in town, and Kevin lives in town.
I don't live in town.
No?
I live in town.
He's the smart one.
So, anyway, is there a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen? Yes. So, moved, I recommend Joel Lawrence.
John.
I'm sorry, John.
That's the guy.
Oh, Joel.
Joel Lawrence used to be our building inspector.
Joel Lawrence, yeah. John Lawrence. All right.
Board.
Motion has been made by Kevin Bernato to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. John Lawrence, as the part-time backup to the transfer station. Thomas Pires is going to step down a second in motion. Any further discussion? I see none. All is in favor of Mr. Bernato.
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also an aye. Welcome aboard. We'll let you know when you can get going. I'll find out if I can get you some training. Well, no, because you're not going to be on the payroll. Never mind.
Yeah, so the first thing that's going to happen is we get right to the letter, get it to the Selectmen. Hopefully, it'll be on next Wednesday's meeting, and then if they vote it, then you have to meet with the treasurer and all that to set up your paperwork or whatever. Then we can start your training.
Okay.
Yep.
So, a couple, a couple of weeks could come.
Yeah, and it might be a Tuesday or Saturday. We'll work, you and Tim can work that out.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your...
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Go.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
4D. Review, discuss an act for recommendation to Board of Selectmen regarding forming a solid waste committee. I'd like to read that, Mr. Katavia. Off your mask. Read out loud.
Oh, can I? Oh, you want me to read out loud?
Would you read out loud?
Oh, okay, I will do. January 14th, 2022, to Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, at their meeting of January 13th, 2022, voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen create a solid waste committee. There are many challenges for the town related to solid waste disposal, including trash, recycling, hazardous waste, electronic waste, organics, bulky items. These challenges include managing curbside pickup, the transfer station, and disposal of items. The contract for curbside pickup with Borges Brothers expires June 30th, 2022, and the contract for disposal of trash with CMAS expires June 30th, 2024. Fees at disposal centers are constantly fluctuating, and Mass DEP continues to implement new rules for disposal and recycling. Dighton will need a comprehensive approach for disposal of trash and recycling, including negotiating contracts. The Board recommends a solid waste committee made up of town officials and residents would be more comprehensive than the Board of Health acting alone for evaluating and negotiating contracts, as well as possibly implementing new programs in creating or adjusting fees. Sincerely, Tom Pires, Chairman, Board of Health.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the things I want to point out is dates, if you happen to catch it. January 14th is tomorrow, January 13th is this evening. We had this and then expectation that the Board members would approve this tonight, and we can send it out tomorrow. We did approve this, I don't know, Todd, nine months or a year ago at a board meeting when...
It wasn't that far back.
No, we spoke, yeah, we talked about it already.
Four months, six months?
It wasn't as long as nine months.
Several months ago that we had discussed this, and then our priorities became COVID endemic, so kind of fell by the wayside. So, it was my feeling that we should probably represent it to the Board and vote on it again. So, with that being said, is there a motion to submit our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for a solid waste committee? A motion was made by Mr. Bernato. I will step down and second that, seconded by Thomas Pires. So, is any further discussion? Seeing there's no further discussion, all is in favor of Mr. Bernato.
Aye.
And Mr. Pires is also an aye, so we can get this over to them tomorrow.
Do you have to sign this one?
Tomorrow, Tuesday.
New budget.
Yeah, it looks too budget.
Okay, we're on item number 4E, review, discuss an act FY '23 budget. Most of our budget is those that have been involved for a while now, especially our solid waste budget is based on volume and cost and contracts that we have with our waste disposal companies for pickup, disposal, and ultimately burning it or recycling it or whatever they're going to do. So, those numbers that we have in there, for those, I'm on account, I'm on 433. If everybody's got 433? Okay.
Yes, the number is up here in the corner.
Oh, okay. I'm in the room now.
This is our waste collection and disposal budget.
Thank you.
For those items that are based on volume, cost, and contracts, we either, we don't either, we do just follow the contract prices, kind of have to guess that volume. But a health agent's been great in keeping track of the, in the last couple of years, track of volume for the recycling, the bulky waste, the solid waste that goes in our pay as your throw bags. So, we have a pretty good handle on, or a good estimate on what that volume will be as predicted for fiscal year '23, and we know what the cost is going to be. So, that's, you know, according to contractual cost. So, we just multiply the two and we come up with that answer. Any of the salary lines that are outlined are consistent with the contract for the clerical workforce, which is 2.5% this year in the contract, and this will be for FY ' '23. So, we can go through it line by line if you like. If you have any questions, we can discuss them. This is new to you, but I'm sure you'll catch on real quick with it.
If I can just say a couple of questions.
You betcha. I'm tired of talking.
So, if you go down to the, kind of the second grouping down there, when you get into rubbish collection, recycling collection, you go all the way across. We don't have a current contract with Borges for 2023. It runs out June 30th.
Yes, we can't...
So, I'm estimating based on past increases, but right now, we've asked Borges for, to give us what it would cost next year, and so he's working on that right now. The next line...
Before you would do that, though, if you ask him for a solid waste committee, I wouldn't let him show what he's going to cost.
Well...
Because that'd be public record, and if they did decide to go off the bid, he would have shown.
If they decide to go out the bid.
He would have shown his number.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it.
Interesting.
I would, yeah, don't let him.
Okay.
He can work on it.
And be ready to present it.
Can be work, work on it. You wouldn't want him to do something.
Now, we're going to need to put it out to bid soon, if we put it out to bid.
If, if it goes out to bid. If it doesn't, and then he just comes up with a number.
We don't have to. This is one of the things we don't have to...
Yeah, trash collection is not obligated to go out to bid, so.
So, just some...
Borges has been doing it for 40 years.
Yeah. How about if we add to that other letter in preparation for FY '24? Because they're not going to get this in a couple of months.
Take out the board as well as expiring?
Well, it is going to expire regardless. One letter says one thing, says it's going to expire, and we're talking about bids and contracts, and then you want, you don't want him to give his number, and then they say, oh, we'll go out to bid, and then he already...
But the thing is, by the time they create a committee and everything, it's going to be too late to put things out to bid. We'd have to stay with us for this year for...
This year is going to be us.
Yeah.
Making this decision. There is no, they want this by January 23rd.
Yeah, they need our budget number by, yeah, so. No, I agree with you. If, and if Borges, yeah, it, like I say, it won't be a formal document that he submits. And so, again, I would just ask...
It's not on the agenda, but we can put it on the agenda next, next agenda, to say what we want to do for this, next year, and then moving forward, we change that for... Let's go back to the version.
Makes sense, Kevin.
Yeah.
But right now, it's just my numbers here right now.
Yeah, so this way, if we just want to keep things as they're going until next year, then we...
So, the next line down is CMAS. That's the cost of disposing of our trash. If you go all the way to the right column, they see 8.44%. That's the increase. We are seeing increased volume in trash, because people are working from home where, you know, they were going into the office. So, that's why that number is up. It's a function of volume, because CMAS can only go up by so much percentage each year in what they cost us. So, that's, that's a volume thing, so. That's based on last year's tonages. I went forward next year and added a little bit more to it based on historic increases. So, because we get new houses every year.
Just going to say, new houses.
Yeah, off the top of your head, do you recall what the volume of trash was? Because I know for years, we worked for around 600 tons, and I think that's way above that
I'm going to do it off the top of my head. That'd be waste disposal. So, which one do you want? CMAS? So, last year, we had 1,800 tons of trash. I picked 1,900 tons this year, because it's, it's been really difficult to predict through this, so...
It was only a couple of years back. It was between 600 and 700, I believe. I don't know.
I can open it up, but I feel like it was, it was, when I started here, it was like 1,400 tons.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, it's jumped a lot.
Makes a lot of sense.
It's going up faster than you'd think, but it's, it seems to be fairly consistent the last two years. It's just thrown all the numbers of trash out the window. Like bulky item day was like quadruple what we did before, whatever, you know, so. So, yeah, so I'm using 1,900 tons. It might be 1,810.
It's fine, as long as we...
But we don't want to be transferring later, so I'd rather ask for it upfront, so.
And you're documenting, so it's not like somebody says, how many tons?
Huge tracker.
It's just documented, and it is what it is. The prices keep going up.
Yeah. So, the next line down, it's 22,000. That's an increase of 120. So, our hazardous waste disposal line, that includes tires, light bulbs, televisions, batteries, laptops, propane tanks, all that stuff. If all that was to come do at once, the 10,000 covers it. What we like to have is a hazardous, household hazardous waste day once a year, and that's going to cost somewhere around $11,000 or $12,000. Last year, we tried to, a budget for it, and it was taken out.
They took some.
We had to go for a special article. So, again, we're going to try and put it back in here into the budget, because if it's in the budget, we can plan for it and make arrangements. These companies book up fast, so we're trying to...
We didn't get any grant money for that, though, right?
No, but DEP has said that if you have one household day, like they'll pay for the second one or something like that in a year, or if you have two, they'll pay for the third, whatever it was, but we got to get past having the first one before we have that discussion.
Yeah, the one, two years ago that we had was, cost us $10,400. And so, a couple of years later, I don't think $12,000 is a lot to ask.
Unless nobody wanted to do it for us, right? Nobody responded to it.
We couldn't get anybody, no. They're tough to fit.
That's the thing, too.
Yeah, we're struggling to get people to call us back. The last number down there is recycling stickers for $40,000, sorry, trash bags, $40,000. That's an increase of 11% over last year. You may remember the issue we had with ordering trash bags, the price for raw materials and the plastic bags has jumped significantly. It's like a 33% increase over last year. So, that's why I went up by 11%. I'm like, I'm just trying to stay ahead of it. But we have enough bags to get through the year, and we're good with that. But I think this past year, we bought $35,000, $36,000 worth of bags, so.
What about the monitoring and testing wells? Is that a contract as well?
It is a contract that's...
Does it expire?
And expiring this year.
So that has to go out to bid, or does it?
It does. That was $15,000, but we ended up, we broke it into two companies to do it, and I think we got it for $12,000, but then there was some retesting, and it ended up being like $17,000 that we had to pay, so.
Now, last time, they did a great job, Roslin and Todd. And Marilyn, I guess, I don't know what her role was, she's the procurement officer, but what about this year with our administrator? Is he helping you with it? Yeah, is he helping you with this, or no?
What did he say, well, you've already done it in the past, so basically we just have to change daytime and send it out. But yes, he will be helping us when we get.
Because he's the procurement.
Yeah, we have a.
He's the procurement officer. We have a good template now that was created by Todd and Roz. So. Which was the town administrator's job at the time. See, that definitely has to go out to bid.
Yes. And again, we.
That should go out soon then, right?
Yes.
So we have the number.
It used to be one company, but when we put it out to bid, our previous town administrator felt we could get a better deal if we split it into two, which we did, we saved a few thousand dollars, but then the overages ended up costing us more because they had to retest. But that's why the $15,000 should cover us.
And then CMAAS, how long do we have for CMAAS?
That's in the letter you just read.
That's, it's Covanta, no. 24 Covanta, sorry, I'm.
Oh, yeah, we changed the name to Covanta.
One more year for them.
Yep, two more years.
Two more years, I can't, I can't do math, sorry. It's getting expensive. Oh, another thing I want to mention along with 5,300, line 5,300, monitor testing wells. After speaking with Tom Ferry and, and to keep the. Stay under the radar of DEP. We thought it might be a good idea to get a third-party inspection of the old. Dump or landfill, if you will, off of Hot Street. You know there's one there, right? It was closed in the 70s. You remember the Hot Street dump, don't you?
No, I don't.
No? Yeah, that, that was, that's where a lot of dumping occurred from ICI, and. A lot of it was burnt.
You didn't go down there with your flashlight on your 20?
Up on the hill, up on the hill, Tom?
No, that's where their.
That's ICI, that was.
But what does he want to do?
It was bad.
Huh? What does he want to do? No, the one on the hill was sludge. I know, but what does Tom Ferry want to do?
Wants somebody to do like a compliance inspection, to make sure everything's still okay, like fences, signage, gates, whatever.
Yeah, we want to get a third-party inspection, so this is gonna go up another thousand. Remember those stuff?
Yeah, they're not, they're not drilling, we don't need to drill any tests.
Okay.
No, this is.
Did you open up a can of worms down there?
No, we.
I know.
We're past our time on that dump.
Yeah, we're good with that, so long as we keep it watching the erosion and all the other things, the signage. He should, he should, I recommend if he's doing that, I know it's not on the agenda, but write something stating what the, what that needs, when you're working on this budget, so when you say, ask for that amount, they say, wow, why are you asking for an increase? This was brought to us by the Highway Department.
So what we started doing a couple of years ago, when we started having these big overages because of trash, we started writing an explanation of these overages, so that everybody could see in writing what it was, so that it wasn't hearsay, it was in writing, so we do that every year now.
Okay. Yeah, he'll be having comments on. The hazmat disposal, 12,000 is earmarks for household hazardous waste day, and we have the volume reports for everything else that goes, so. We're, we're very. Yeah, as long as everything's detailed, because obviously, I know you don't live in town, but everybody got their taxes, and they're high, and so people wondering, where is our money going and what's going on, so, so as long as it's everything documented.
Every tax is a high just.
Well, that's why we got all the, all the records, so what I'm saying is 5,300 could go up a thousand or so, for them to just go out there.
We're, we're just, it only came up today, and we're gonna reach out to see.
Yeah, so.
Or we'll take the price of what it costs to inspect Tremont Street and just apply it to there to set a number, but we'll, we'll figure it out.
So. Automobile stickers, when did we buy them?
So we buy automobile stickers like every two years, and according to this, the last one we bought was fiscal year 20, so we need to buy them this year.
So we got 20, no, we got 21, 22?
Yes.
Oh, because we're selling 22.
We're selling 22, so we have to buy them.
23 and 24.
Now to get for 23, yes, but by the end of the year, we have to buy them.
Okay, 700, because it went over last year, went over to 650 a little bit.
No, no, we didn't buy them last year.
Well, the year we bought them, it went over 650. Last year was 20, fiscal year 21. When you, when, is there any way?
22 right now, right? This says the last time we bought them was fiscal year 20.
Okay, when you bought them in 20. Oh, okay. Did you, how many, they lasted until?
We buy, we buy two years.
Two years, so that, that first year, did you have any extra?
We always have a few extra.
A few, or a lot?
You know, like we buy like 300 or 250, and I think we sold 230.
All right, so that's the best way to look at it, see the sales of the last couple of years, they just go a little more than now. Yeah, should be.
Yeah, when we go to place the order, we'll look at historically and we'll, we'll see how many to order, but it's a matter of, but the price is what keeps changing, so. That's why I went up by $50, but maybe we should go up by more.
We can find out what the.
Get a price.
800. You can find out what the price is, and what the, and what the historical is, and then see, that, that's how you figure out what your increase should be. Getting one on my car. I lost my truck driver. He moved to a different town. So what do you want to do, Kev, you want to make, just make it 800, or you want? I'd rather have them do, this is just the, just the beginning of this, right? I'd like them just to go back and see the.
We can, because we have till the end of the month, is it?
23rd.
January 23rd, so I was gonna see if we wanted to have another meeting in between now and then to finalize it, once we get some other numbers or tweak anything you guys wanted.
One of this by the. I'm sorry, 31st.
31st.
January 31st?
So we could probably finalize the budget and do a workshop before the end of the month.
We could, because finalizing the budget shouldn't take long, and finishing the workshop shouldn't take.
Yeah, we really just want to kind of do this, this is. And show Barbara will.
I know, you just got to, and we don't have the emergency prep budget here, because the emergency prep committee has to have a meeting to vote it, to then send it to.
Now, if you have anything.
There are some committees.
If you have anything in between, send them in by email, so this way we can.
Okay.
Any change.
I literally just finished it off at, what, what time? Five o'clock?
We could do a straight Zoom tool if it's a. You know, I don't hate them.
I hate Zoom too. I always mess up.
Yeah, so office supplies, what were you on, 510? I'll sell on 432.
On 433 at the moment.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, office supplies, 500? Communications, 2000?
Well, the communications line originally started because we have a phone up there, and we have to have a phone as part of having a landfill, and so I think that was part of it, I think some of that has changed over time, but there's still other stuff we do up there. We haven't spent any money this year.
This is where my recycling flyer money came from.
Oh, right.
Which was about 1,500. Okay. And I'm getting ready to update that and send it out.
Because what's coming down the line, November 1st of this year, DEP.
That is communications.
Yep.
Yeah.
As of November 1st is this year coming up, DEP has stricter regulations going into effect on trash and recycling and stuff, so we gotta get the word out, so.
Yeah, we gotta update the recycling flyer, you get one in the mail?
What?
A recycling flyer. All right. So really, it's these.
I think I did them.
You're not gonna know this number, these recycling and rubbish collection, unless we act on something.
Well, I'm hoping I can have some better fine-tuned numbers for you by the end of the month, so.
I hope so, too, yeah.
But I think we're gonna be pretty close, but it's pretty close, and if you remember a couple of years ago, when we first hit, we were off by $80,000 because there's so much.
Well, that's because the town administrator failed to update the. The contractual price on the budget for Borges. Yeah, I took the hit for that, but. Anyway. Not this town administrator, by the way.
The previous one. All right, so we're dealing with 433 now?
510.
And if any, either Barbara or Kev, if anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to email or call me, and whatever, we'll get answers, so. What else, right?
510, all, all the salaries are at 2.5%, including, did you increase the assistant inspector? No, we won't do that.
Do they?
The only thing that really changed was the, other than the 2.5% on salaries, was the overtime line. Boosted to $3,000 because. It, hopefully, we won't spend that, but the way history for the last two years, health agent has gone way over. Time due to COVID, and I'm hoping that, you know, things are gonna change there, but. And unless you feel that we should not. Increase it, if we don't spend it, it goes into general funds, so. I suspect that the finance committee is gonna bring that down anyway. What did you normally spend last year was? I don't know, overtime?
Oh.
It's hard to even tell, right?
It says right here, 1226 in fiscal year 20. And this year, it says 510, but it was, when you divide it by my hourly rate, it's not a lot of overtime hours, it's only like 20 hours of overtime in a year right now, so. You know, you can go through it pretty quick, but I was doing COVID overtime, but then it gets switched over to CARES or whatever, and so it's, it's been a weird game with my overtime, but.
It's really tough, because he increased his hours, so.
Yes, so hopefully, the overtime should drop.
Yeah, so if, the highest one was 1226, you should kind of go towards that, 1,500 or something.
I was also getting paid $10 an hour less then.
But I'm saying you go to 28 hours, yeah.
You know, you're right, Kevin, the number shouldn't go up.
Yeah, so you round off on that 1226. My feeling is finance committee is gonna recommend $2,000.
Or 1,000 or something.
Or 1,500. 1,500, I'm saying. I'll let them.
Because you drop it to 1,500 now, then they're gonna cut it to 1,000.
Okay.
Right?
That's how it usually works, yes.
And you'll see my salary line there is a 9% increase, that's because of the additional hours over last year, but that was all part of a town meeting when they talked about it, that there would be an increase this year, I mean, it's only a 2.5% raise, but that is the extra hours that kicked it up.
Is it?
Overlasted.
Did they say 2.5, or did they say 2?
The union contract is 2.5.
Okay.
And so they're honoring that for the non-union employees right now.
Okay. I don't expect, I think. I know the game, how the game is played, but I think we ought to go in with 2,000 on 5131. Okay. So change it? Yeah.
Which line?
5131. Your overtime additional hours.
Change it to what?
2,000. I look at it this way, if they want to cut up a little 2,000, which I think is necessary, then not our problem. It sticks out to them, because it's a 200. Yeah, 3,000. 200% increase. 2,000 is a jump. Yeah, they look at it and say, what? You're working 35 hours now. Well, you can do that, public input during a report, but I, I think. I don't know if you heard it, because of your job now, that state's supposed to stop contact tracing.
They're discussing it, they're talking about, I think schools are gonna stop contact tracing first, and then it'll be the rest of that, Nicole's here, she's our nurse, she might have more to say, but inclinations are that they may be stopping the contact tracing. But they haven't, it's not in writing anywhere, but Nicole, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
I didn't see you, come on, I'm, I'm sorry, I would have recognized it.
No, that's okay, it just seems like from our calls that we have weekly, it's just, they're slowly going towards that way, they're obviously not gonna do it all together because they need it to be a slow progression, but that definitely seems the way it's going.
Amazing, huh?
Yeah, that, you know, when you consider when we first closed and how cautious they were with reopening back in like March of 2020, or whatever it was, and then you look at where we are now, where it's just kind of like, you know, it's crazy, it's, it's like they just go from zero to 100 like that, so.
Yeah, I know.
It's nuts.
We're done, we're done with 510, I know?
I think so. As a general note, I bet, I believe next year, they're gonna combine 510 and 519 into one board of health account, so it'll be easier for us instead of having multiples, but it hasn't happened yet.
Happened to see a budget for the whole town, I think it was back in the 70s, the whole town, 25 line items, the whole town.
How much? How much more?
I don't know, but it was. $7. It's crazy, the, the number of line items, just one department has.
Well, and just so you know, this year, we just broke a million dollars for the board of health budget, we were at over 900 last year, but we had a million this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the trash, the recycling.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to 519. Board of Health Administration. Once again, this, any salaries are at 2.5. The, just a question, Todd. Contact tracer is coming out of the 5106 line with town nurse, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So on a, a brief aside here. The town of Dayton is entering into a regional contract for some nursing help, which is to supplement our, our current nurse, Nicole, and our contact tracer. Sure, quite how it's gonna work out, we're still working it out, but that is supposed to help that, so it'll provide some extra help when we need it effectively, so. Yeah, everybody's a 2.5% raise, the board chairman, the members, the nurse, Roz also got a 2.5% raise, but the difference with. Us is last year was a 52 week and three days or something, and this year is 52 weeks and one day, so it's.
Yeah.
That's why it's 0.3% instead of 2.5%, she is getting a 2.5% raise.
Okay. Overtime for that one, same thing?
She's at 2,000, historically, she hasn't gone over that, so it seems to be a good number for her. And all the stuff at the bottom, you notice we just level funded all that stuff.
We don't do anything with stormwater anymore, eh? What's that? The DPA stormwater.
Nope, that's, that's gone.
That was closed out, yeah? Pest control, we don't spend any more money on pest control.
No, that has been moved over into the highway department, I think Tom Ferry now manages that budget, so. It's like a lot of our stuff here, like facilities, where the energy and the non-energy on 433, that all went into the selectmen, they moved some things around to help streamline, I'm trying to get us back to the 70s with 25 line items, so.
And your dues, they, they cover everything, everything you signed up for?
Haven't had any problems yet, so. Because for me, it's only my fire evaluator and my title five inspector, and then.
MHOA or something? You're not a part of that, a few of the classes, that's trainings, but. We got. You, are you, are you with Miha? No.
Yeah, so that's $45 or something like that.
Yeah, we're gonna want Barbara to be going to some training.
Definitely.
I see a lot of training. I see a lot of training.
There is a talk now, because when I first started here, we did the ServSafe. Can you remember that? Back in 2017? For a lot of different people in town. That's only good for five years, so it expires this year. So there might be a need to try and get a ServSafe class here again, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
I think we're up, I'm up this year.
Well, you took it with me, right?
Yeah, that was in 2017, yeah. We reached out to all the vendors, food. See if they wanted to take, we had 15 people maybe.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we had, we had reached out to anybody who felt they needed ServSafe. They could join our group. I think it was cheaper even, or something.
We got a good deal on it, so.
I'll have to see who did it last time and see what they're doing now. But when did you?
Well, because I took a water, it might be online too, so.
Do you recall when we took that?
It's on my certificate, I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
But I know it was 27.
It was 2022.
Yeah.
Because I've been telling myself my ServSafe expires this year.
It would have been like September, October of 2017, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be gone by then.
You keep saying that.
All right. And we also have to move on to 4G.
I am.
I'm your fire. We're discussing Act Resident Hamburg of what to expect when installing, repairing, and upgrading a septic system. It's a good read, I think it's pretty accurate. The only thing I think we might want to add is number one. The repair after a Title V inspection fail is, has to be done in two years.
Add in the two years, is that what, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Only other thing, I think? Well, I can find these parts. At the end, we should put links, DEP has question and answer, several question and answer pages on their website. I think we ought to put a few links in there.
But if we're going to change the regs, we'd have to add to this. Water analysis.
Well, this is not a reg, this is just.
No, but if you're going to, somebody would like to know, they're going to need a water test.
Yeah, what he's saying, it doesn't say that you need a water test for Title V inspection. If we're going to change it in our rights, we need to say.
Oh, okay, add it in there. If we approve our, if we, the proposed regs that we're working on.
I get you. And if we pass them, it'll reflect on this then.
Yeah.
So Barbara, what this is, is it was, we get a lot of homeowners that come to us, like around the engineer or whatever, and so we felt that having a handbook for the homeowners, so they can get a good idea of what's going on.
Yep.
And that's what it was meant to be. So feel free to read through it and throw in any comments you want. Roz and I put it together, we don't take offense to comments.
I think they also need a section here for maintenance. A lot of people just have never had a septic system. They've been in the cities with sewers, not supposed to put oil down there. They're not sure how often they're supposed to pump it.
That's a very good point.
I know I went online and something came up, and I was starting talking to this one person, and all of a sudden, there were like 30 people asking me questions. And they were the craziest questions, but they were honest, they didn't know about these things.
No, we can throw that, links are easy enough to put in there.
Actually, what?
Because this document will be available online, so.
When I first spoke with Barbara about the board of health, and she had some ideas that she had told me, I think, which is what you're referring to right now, holding a classroom type thing where residents can ask questions, become informed about their septic systems. And that would be great, we could do that.
As soon as COVID's over.
Yeah, yeah, it's never going to happen.
I will give them.
Because people that come from the city, they don't know.
They have no clue, no clue.
Pour the grease down there and they think.
Yeah.
And they get that.
It magically goes away.
Yeah.
And the other thing was, they use a lot of bleach, and you know that just breaks down everything in the septic system. And then all of a sudden, things are not decomposing, and they're backing up, and they don't know why.
Yeah.
So I don't, we had a lot of trouble when they would come with the antibacterial soap and everything else, and a lot of.
Wipes and people flush?
Yeah, everything was, and I love to use bleach on my whites, so I have to be real, hold myself back on that.
That's a good point there.
We'll throw a bunch of stuff in and move.
Yeah, if you would. You don't tag me, do you?
I don't think I do, Todd.
Do you need my business cards, Todd?
No. Yeah, it was a box of 500, so.
Okay, how about we do this? If you read through this.
Yeah, and I'm going to look through these too.
Over the next.
If they have to be added later on, proposed.
Yeah, you can post something now and then revise it later, so.
Send your email, send your suggestions for change or additions to Todd or Roz. And the only difference on that is the R grassing instead of T filling.
But I can grab your card.
That way there, we should have it together for our final. We could actually put this in a workshop. For board of health.
We need this as a guide, it's not a thing, whatever you want to do.
I'll read over it, either or, yeah, okay.
Moving along, the information is not coming, and our inspector's not here.
4G.
It was not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance.
I don't have it.
I don't even know why we put that on there.
Just in case.
Yeah, just in case. That way we can talk about something if it came up 24 hours ago and we don't have to have an emergency meeting, so.
You can always talk about it, but you can't vote on it, so.
Yeah.
Right.
About the health agent, well, I'm going to go with. Oh, about doing a report for us.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed the first half of what you said.
Would you mind doing a warrant to inspectors reports? We're going to add nurse report from town nurse report. So do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I don't think this week, but next time I could be better prepared. I don't know if I have anything bad. That'd be great.
Okay.
Please tell us how it's going with your new contact tracer.
So the new contact tracer, Diana, she's absolutely excellent. She seems to be right on things. I've been in contact with her on and off on how she's doing. She's doing very well. She had reached out to, I'm not how many sure, how many cases yet? She had mentioned something about 16. I don't know if that's exactly how many people she was at, ended up being able to actually get ahold of, or if that's just how many calls she made altogether.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, we'll, I would, I want to ask you to come and give a report at our meetings. You can do Zoom, that's fine. So we'll add you on to reports for our next meeting.
Yeah, that would be great. I would love to maybe add some things on what we're seeing in town in regards to COVID, and maybe some things that the state has reported on. If there's any changes and anything, I could add that to it.
That was great.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Second Thursday of every month at 6 o'clock.
I'll be there.
Okay, health agent, anything else?
Number one is the pandemic reopening task force today met, and the discussion is basically reopening is pretty much kind of done, so the committee is going to dissolve. But that a lot of the stuff relative to the pandemic, like mandating masks or Zoom meetings or whatever, is going to fall on the board of health instead of the board of selectmen. Because right now, the pandemic task force, which I'm a member of, and Nicole is now a member of, we make recommendations to the selectmen, and then they are the ones voting to do mask mandates or closing town hall, et cetera, et cetera. But they want to push more of that onto the board of health because this is a public health thing, so that was that. Hunter's Hill subdivision down off of Anderson Miller's Lane, they had a fuel truck down there they used to refill all their equipment with. And I guess it's been sitting there for a while, and some water got in the diesel tank, and then the water, the diesel floats to top, so the water went to the bottom, to the pipe underneath, and it split when it froze. So we had a few hundred gallons worth of diesel fuel drop onto the pavement. Thankfully, somebody was like walking their dog or whatever and noticed it, so they ran in the buckets and whatever, and reflected like 100 gallons of it. And deep, the fire department came down and put all their things in, but some water did make it into the detention basin. There's a licensed site practitioner, the LSD, they're in there doing their thing. There's a cleanup crew in there, and DEP is involved, so we don't have to do anything.
Do some monitoring wells and.
Yeah, whatever they need to do. And there, I don't have more for you because it happened yesterday. So they got to do some testing and reporting, and by next meeting, I should have a update for the board. We're going to be doing an updated stormwater on Wednesday and filling them in on it and that, but it was an unfortunate accident.
And there's a retention port, retention pond on, back of the houses on the outside.
If you go in the gate at the elbow of that, and you follow, and then you come to like the T, take a right, and then on your right is a little cul-de-sac. There's no houses on that street, that's where the trucks are.
There's catch basins there, right?
There are catch basins, yes, but there was no hoods on the catch basins. So one of, the hoods separate the oil and would have held back like 50 or 100 gallons of oil in that. So I think the stormwater committee, since it's still eroded under construction, we're going to ask that they put hoods on those catch basins, so. But, you know, that's.
They've been inactive for dorma for a long time.
So they are getting ready for phase two, but they are putting in a wastewater treatment facility because they're putting in another 100 houses. And so that wastewater treatment's over 10,000 gallons a day, so we're not involved, it's going to be entirely DEP.
So they are going to put in a plant?
Yes.
I know they want to do individuals, remember?
They did, but they're, the soils aren't that good for parking, so they're going to go with the wastewater treatment.
Okay, that's all DEP, that's a perfect one.
That's all DEP. Stacy and I have had a couple issues we've had to deal with. I'm not necessarily going to get into it here, but we have one place where there were some animals that needed to be taken by the MSPCA. And starting to do some barn inspections and such. We had somebody that animals didn't have a shelter, or he's going to put up a shelter or whatever, but it's all under control. Then the other place that we have where the animals kept getting out across the street into the neighbor's yard and digging in the yard, that seems to be under control. They've given away a lot of the animals, and they put up more fencing, so that seems to be under control also, so.
It'd be nice to have her report next time or something, even just to tell people to take care of the animals, especially with this weather.
We'll get her to come to that meeting.
It's not on this agenda, but I think since our newest member is also a member of the agricultural commission, that we should at least address the complaint we got. And then we can see what we all recommend as a, as a board, if we want to hold a session between everybody like we talked about before. But I think it's, it'd be a good opportunity to bring it to one of our meetings first to get your perspective and point of view. It's for the birdhouse down on Pleasant Street, so.
The other thing that is pushing is, I believe, and I know we, I don't think we've talked about it here, I think the act commission needs to work on limits, how many animals you can have per acre.
Definitely. Definitely.
You and I can talk off camera, but there's been a couple places where it's far, far too many animals for too small of a space, so. And I'm not saying we want to be like one per 10 acres kind of thing, but I'm, you know, I think if you've got an eighth of an acre, you know, one horse is enough. I don't think you need that, so, but anyhow.
People do have regs for that, local regs.
Local regs, but we don't have any.
I know, but that's when you make up local regs.
That's what the act commission needs to do.
But I'm saying, like, I don't want to go back again, but at the time of Lakeville, you'd have to have so much acreage for the number of horses.
Definitely.
If you didn't meet that, you wouldn't be able to have that, or get the permit from us, from them, so.
And it should be that way.
And they came from the board of health.
Alpacas or.
They're regs, and they look at different.
We want a recommendation from them before we would do something. We're not going to come up with it on our own, so. Yep.
Definitely. Talk about that.
You have regulations yet?
No, no.
How many times do you guys meet?
I'll tell you, I haven't been in a while because I was racing on Thursday nights with the horses, so I couldn't go. So I'm, right now, I am a, I'm a member, but a non-voting member. So I'll have to get back into it. I kind of, well, we'll talk about it all.
All right, yeah, you can talk to Todd and stuff.
Definitely, we'll, I totally agree with that, and that was one of the things.
Well, and I don't want to say nobody disagrees, it's the, what's the number? If you've got one acre, how many cows can you have? Is it number one, is it number 10, is it 50? Does it depend if you're feeding them? Can you have 100 goats? And the number is going to be the discussion, not whether or not that should be.
Exactly, and I don't think it should be, well, I have 30 acres, yes, but 28 of it is woods.
It's true.
What are you using, right, yeah, so, but, yeah.
Exactly.
We'll get that.
Okay. Yeah, COVID has pretty much put a crunch on everything.
It has, really has.
With, you know, everything, but hopefully.
We can have our nurse write the regulations.
First, first, good, first year 23.
She's still here.
Got a job for you.
I love animals. Great, Nicole, great.
Want to be on the act mission too?
All right, moving on to public input, there's no public. Anybody have anything else they want to add?
I don't.
No? Any correspondence?
No.
I'm going to ask that we table these minutes, because I read a few minutes there were. I'm not sure these were them.
I get them.
I make a motion to table agenda item eight.
Need to motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion's made by Mr. Kevin Bernato to table item number eight, which is approval of minutes of November 18th and December 9, 2021. Tom Pyer's going to step down a second at motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, Mr. Bernato.
Aye.
Mr. Pyer's also an aye. I'm sure there's nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Bernato makes a motion to adjourn. Tom Pyer's stepped down a second at motion. All those in favor, Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
Mr. Bernato was an aye, Mr. Pyer's also an aye. Good evening, everyone, thank you for joining us, and we'll probably see you at the end of this month.
Oh, we should schedule that date before we adjourn.
We should.
They're adjourned now. That's all right, we'll schedule real quick.
Oh, you can schedule meetings without, it's not an open meeting a lot of our.
I know, but just.
Well, while we're still on camera, we might as well.
Might as well.
So we have to have it done by January 31st, which is a Monday. So you want to aim for like Thursday to 27?
As long as we're not going to get rushed out of here.
Thursday to 27.
We should go quick, though.
You want to start a little early this way, no? Because I totally didn't even know we were going to meet at 5.
Just start at 5 and get out of here early.
Right, I'll make the, try to get out early.
Of course.
Nope, there's no meetings in here that night.
Oh, no, 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 no. Actually, I can't, not at 5 PM, no. I have a training until 6, oh God.
Well, we could do Wednesday.
Nobody here?
All week long.
No meetings?
I have a training.
No, no, I'm just asking him. We could do that on Monday, oh no, because we got to get, it's due Monday.
31st.
But if we have a meeting Monday night, could we then, too late?
I've been told that before.
Wow.
That before the meeting, right? If you go to put it in at night, it's too late. You don't have a meeting on a Wednesday, no more, right?
No, it's just that week I have a training.
All week? Wouldn't be early.
Wouldn't even be able to get here till 6:30, right, if you're early.
Probably going to, that's, the only day that I don't have that.
We do, we'll do it at 6:30. Well, no, then you guys.
We need more than, yeah, because we need more than a week. We need more than, yeah, because we need more than a week.
Did you say there was one day you didn't have meetings?
Friday.
It's a Friday, though, you guys don't work on Friday.
You, you can't do Monday the 31st?
If we did, we'd have to do it earlier in the day, because we have to get it to the selectmen by 4:30 on Monday.
I don't know. I'll, I'll find out if we can submit it on the 31st. Because unless it's.
I can call him right now, he calls me in the middle of the night.
Yeah, there you go.
Does he call you in the middle of a meeting?
All the time.
I got, I was home the other, last week, and he says, you gotta log on to the Zoom meeting. I says, uh, I, after I logged on, I figured out why, but. What else you do? I'd be home watching, and then I'll say, I should go down there because we're getting torn apart for baseless, no fact reasons.
What about next week?
What about next week?
Too early?
Next week is good too.
Next week.
Well, that's only gives us a week, so we get everything together, is that. And she's not gonna be on the board until the Wednesday night, is when she'll get appointed, so she could.
Just do it to Thursday next week.
Thursday the 20th? We can.
We can try.
We can try, Monday's a holiday, so that only gives me three days to put it all together, so. And if you wanted to do a workshop too.
No, not the workshop, oh no, I gotta look at my calendar.
Well, we'd skip the workshop and we'd just do the budget. And in theory, you only need two people to vote the budget, and if he wasn't here and we had the meeting on the 27th with you two, you could vote the budget. If, as long as he's, you know, he can let me know if people stay with it.
Let's, yeah, let's get something, ask, ask for the 31st first, see if we can do that.
Yeah, give it, turn it in on the 1st.
Yeah.
We've got to wait for them, because if they do by 4:30, if we have it on their desk at 7:30 the next morning, they weren't doing anything with it overnight anyway.
Good point.
Yeah, that's true.
So.
Just say close of business.
Not gonna, yeah, why was it, it's gonna all of a sudden, like Cinderella's gonna turn into a pumpkin?
We want to tentatively schedule Monday the 31st.
That's the best.
5 o'clock, 5:30?
Let's do 5. And the worst comes to worst, if I get a little late, Barbara will already be appointed, I mean.
Well, it's a gray area, because it doesn't say end of business or close of business on January 31st.
Yeah, just say we're meeting on this day.
Who was the one that said?
Hey, you should have worked Friday, are we, are we closed?
Should be voted in, unless.
Are we off?
Uh, listen, Nick. All right, Nicole, we're done.
Hi.
Night.
Night, night. That's not mine, that's not my water.
Oh, take it this way, it's good for you.
Hold on, I'm not from Sturgis.
Yeah, we can't go to a Gores without Roz. After the meeting.
Hold on, hold on.